Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors Work Session Meeting for January ninth to order. Ms. Branch, if you could call the floor, please.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yeah.
Mr. Hedges.
Here.
Mr. Garver.
Here.
Ms. Moskowsky. Chairman Warren.
Here. We have, uh, the agenda is unchanged. I think it's a rare occasion, but I would like to offer a motion to amend to move, uh, item four C bylaws and rules of procedure to work session matters to five I or just before or after. We found that during our review last week that it could take a little bit of time, so we don't want to delay guests any longer than we have to.
So I've made it.
Oh, second. Move in a second, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Hedges.
Is that including all changes or is there any more?
Just this one.
Okay. All right.
Change.
Mr. Hedges.
Hi.
Mr. Garver.
Hi.
Ms. Moskowsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
Hi. And with that, I'd like to open up the nomination for board chair for the year twenty twenty-three.
What about any other changes? That's what I was asking.
Well, sir, do you have any other changes?
Yeah, well, I have a question first. The appointment to the planning commission, what is that?
That is.
Uh, I'm sorry. Five, four, E, five.
Okay.
What position is that? I guess it's my question.
Mr. Greenwood fills it at the moment.
Fills it at this moment?
Yes.
Uh, have we reviewed fifteen point two days, twenty-two twice? We said it'll run along with the term with the member.
Unless changed by the board.
Okay. So it's gonna have to be a motion to do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we strike, uh, five, four, E, five, just from the agenda completely. Cause we had a resolution last year, twenty-two dash fifteen, they clarified it with at the time county attorney. Of course, anything can be changed, but there's no need to hash all this stuff up again. So I make a motion that we just delete that line.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch.
Mr. Carver.
Hi.
Ms. Moskowsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hedges.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
May. Any others? Okay, now we open it up, the election of board chair for twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we elect Mr. William Hodges as chairman of the board this coming year, this year.
Okay. Motion's been made, properly seconded. Any further? Ms. Branch.
Ms. Moskowsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hedges.
Hi.
Mr. Garver.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
Hi.
You still sitting next to me?
I don't know.
Do you move at this point?
Yeah.
Oh, they know who I am.
Well, he's down the other end.
Don't forget to mention beautiful West Point. That's open, really that open now. And you do remember that.
I do, yes.
All right, and I had one more thing that I, I just wanted to mention, um, the school teacher in Newport News, Abby, and I hope I don't mess up her name, Rowaner. Keep her in your prayers. She's in stable condition. She was a West Point graduate and a JMU grad.
Really?
Yeah.
Didn't know that.
Yeah. Sure. Anyway, now on with, uh, four B, the election of board vice chair.
Well, you go ahead, if you guys.
Oh, I was, uh, Mr. Chairman, I like the, I like the, Mr. Stuart Garver as vice chair.
Ms. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hedges.
Hi.
Mr. Garver.
Upstaying.
Ms. Moskowsky.
Hi.
Chairman Warren, I'm sorry. Mr. Warren.
Hi.
So you don't have plates in yourself?
Yeah, I've got a lot of plates in myself. I just, I just didn't do it comfortably.
All right, four D, the meeting calendar, I think there's a whole season, some, uh, changes already suggested in that, correct? My, yeah. And one of my members from the meeting the other day was, they did December one to get rid of, uh, the second meeting, not having a work session, correct?
Oh, I thought it was the opposite. I thought we were gonna move them.
Well, it would probably be about when the work session would have been, but it would be our regular meeting, correct? We, we wouldn't have a, a work session and not a regular meeting. Correct? Was sort of request.
I thought it was a work session and combined as the regular meeting.
That's, well, that's, okay. We would just treat it, I would think we would just treat it as a regular, as a monthly meeting. So run the agenda, you know, as, as we would if it was the, the second meeting.
Right. Is there any other?
So that's still Monday, December the eleventh, correct?
Okay.
No.
No, it's not?
No, that's when it's moved to, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the same thing that we had.
Right.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman, on the, uh, election day, um, the new election day is March seventh, and we have that school board meeting. So I was wondering, we had to move our meeting because of that, how come we don't have to move that meeting? Is it not gonna be here this year?
I mean, the problem with this, this is, this is a polling place.
I know, but we're having a meeting.
It'll be.
None of the meetings supposed to be at schools. It wasn't last year.
Hamilton Homes.
It was here last year.
Well, I know, but this is one different person to have it in.
Okay, that's what I didn't know. Because of that. Okay, I thought Hamilton Homes is not a voting place?
No.
Thankfully, no.
Okay.
I just was wondering, cause yeah, last year we had it here, so if it's at Hamilton Homes, that's fine.
All right, Hamilton Homes is in the same voting district, so.
Okay. That's all I saw, except October was moved, except we can't, that's another, uh, day for holiday, so we pushed it up instead of back. I was wondering if we could push it back, but that's not the big deal, so.
What, which one are you talking about?
October, they pushed the regular, the work session from the, whatever the second Monday is to the first Monday instead of the third Monday. But I mean, it doesn't matter up or back, but I was.
We. It makes huge problem. Well, you're right, it would, it would go closer to the.
Well, as a personal note, that, my fifteenth anniversary is the eleventh, and if you push it, if you push it back, I probably won't be here, so.
Oh, to the sixteen, okay.
Oh, no, we're gonna make you work your whole year.
Well, if you're ready, come on in, let's keep working.
That's fine.
Yeah. All right, any other suggestions?
Thought you said you had some more.
No, no, no.
Oh, no. Now, I'm, I'm maybe we adopt the calendars as we play, like, so.
Chris.
Ms. Moskowsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garver.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Chairman Hedges.
Hi. All right, the appointments, uh, resolution twenty-three oh one, appointment to the historical preservation and architectural review board. Uh, I, I presently in, I'm in there, but does anybody else have a growing desire?
I'm all for your continued service on that board. I'll nominate Mr. Hodges as your servant.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garver.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Ms. Moskowsky.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. You messed me up, because I'm usually behind, anyway. All right, resolution twenty-three oh two, appointment to the Meadow Peninsular Planning District Commission. And who is that?
That's me, Ed. I'd love to stay on there, yeah. Mr. Warren, you wanna, even though he won't sit next to me.
Of course. It's fifty-one miles door to door.
I know, so it's a trek for you.
Hundred-two round trip, it's just, yeah.
Bit closer for me.
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
So that's two motions from Ms. Moskowsky and Ms. Warren. Need a second?
Second.
Chris.
Mr. Garver.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Ms. Moskowsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hedges.
Hi. Resolution twenty-three oh three, appointment direct creation commission.
If you'd said that.
Yeah, I would, I would love to be there. We're having some serious issues with establishing a quorum. We need to address the bylaws. Hopefully, we just cancel the January meeting again because people are not showing up, so, uh, yeah, I'd love to be there to straighten that up.
One second. I thought you gave. Motion carries in properly. Sit down, Chris.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Ms. Moskowsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garver.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. In resolution twenty-three dash oh four, appointment of Virginia career works Bay Corso Consortium, chief elected officials consortium.
Now, who's gonna admit that they serve on this and then therefore get re-nominated to continue there?
I think it's Mr. Warren.
Well, they, they recommend that the chair of the board supervisors attend these meetings.
But they do it at ten o'clock in the morning, we work, and I work.
Yeah, it's an enjoyable, uh, group.
I nominate Mr. Warren.
In a second. Or somebody else.
Ms. Moskowsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garver.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. All right, F is twenty twenty-three, VECO educational opportunities, it's informational only, it's in your packet. If anybody in the audience wants to, pull out one of us. All right, five A, Mr. Pierce. Miss Pierce, yes. I'm not hearing a whole lot, but I'm sure you'll probably include any of the complaints or will you see in a lot or minimum?
I don't. I've watched, I've seen, I've heard all of them myself. I didn't have the courage to say, I'm here to do it. Um, I listen to everybody's concerns, and I have no wrong or against it. Uh, the last day of college is very informative, uh, even funny, it's easy, we went through the most, uh, uh, doing that, and yes, it's, uh, it's very, it's wonderful. Uh, we got to send out things, we better pay taxes, that's why everybody's getting excited, everything's happening. Uh, there's pretty much, too, that I did, we took it to the election, I look forward to working for the situation, uh, to that, where the larger things, I bet, can we go ahead?
It's a long time coming.
So what was the average? Still sixty, sixty-five percent or greater or?
Overall, we've had them stand, the way you told, that it's been for a while, today, before you can, before you, you found, forty-five percent.
So, Chris, I've had a couple of complaints from citizens that the pictures haven't been uploaded, and I talked about that, may be something for our staff. It says you didn't, you given them the pictures, you don't have the ability to download the pictures, so I guess that would be a problem with the website, I guess. That's what I was wondering, if you could, because they're saying there's still old pictures, and I didn't know if anybody was from.
Great, thank you so much. Did you find that those that did appeal, were most of them valid or?
Yeah.
Okay.
This was telling, probably, for, since the time, uh, very valuable. Uh, I was listening to their comments, and I have nothing wrong with that, right? And I think that people left, I don't think anybody's, uh, it's all figured, to say, I just listened to that. Um, and their, their names, they've just gone real well, uh, I, I was proud, I was respect, wondering, uh, but they still have not finished their, their board evaluation. Everybody's in the game, but has much work done. It's, it's, it's done, very well.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one more question. If someone inadvertently missed scheduling with you, can, can they still go to the Board of Equalization? They can.
That, that was a question I, I had one, he didn't inadvertently, he just put it all.
I read your mind.
So, uh, so they can go there.
That's good.
Uh, it's, and I will be available, uh, part throughout the whole year. Uh, they have others, uh, part, there's, uh, part, it's, uh, so it's, it's pretty much over, there's, uh, present work, time, for, um, that I'm doing, uh, nobody comes up, and having these parties, and all the, uh, to, to, to.
But, yeah.
I would appreciate, uh, you know, I've been working to this.
We appreciate it because we remember the last one, and it wasn't pretty.
Appreciate your office being here, somebody being in there to ask, to answer the questions.
That helped, that helped a lot, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Thanks. First.
Yeah.
Is the next one tentative?
One, one, two, three, four.
Ah, here we go, okay. A BOE timeline, rod, competent.
Well, good evening, Bill.
Good evening.
I'm David, Steve, and I represent the court of justice. I don't think, uh, first of all, if I might have a question about the board, you know, they, on my third vote.
Mr. Chair, I'll start off, uh, sir, is there any, uh, training involved that hasn't been accomplished?
Yes, uh, mainly because, yes, the field training's on the last, uh, second, as you know, it's processed. So, uh, I want to, or, I don't know, I don't know, it's probably, it's where it all adds, it's processed, the one, don't, it's a lot, you prefer candidates, then one is the judge. So, simply, probably, the, I mean, you know.
They're with the judge now. Correct.
I'll put those names, and, so here, the, taking, it's, and, from there, let the judge know, we, they, they, of course. You have one, but, uh, this.
Pass, Chairman.
That's all right.
I'm just a plain old mister, then.
Well, the, uh, there are a couple of layers, that's, that's, yeah, so, first, of course, yes, you know, here's some company, and making answer questions, just that's, and then just the board evaluation, and that layer there, to, uh, to review, if you have, then I've had a bunch, that's, that's, of course. There's multiple layers, with the, five, first, that's, that's.
Is there an approval to go to circuit court or?
Not so.
If they file it, they get to go. Is that, if they file it, they get to go?
That's, uh, they.
Okay. I think you gotta.
Yeah, Mr. Garver, he had something he was waiting on.
No, I'm, I'm trying to keep up with this civic force. Not fun.
Just, just one more, sir. Is the training online, in person? How does that process?
The last two years, what, business agreements, I'm so, the overall, just, you know, like, cut out, uh, typically, small, provide a, a online thing. Probably, I don't, some of your meetings.
So ac, it's active in the?
Yes, sir.
There's conversation in there, okay.
Cameras and time, that's, that's, but, of course, by, it's informal, so, you know, uh, like, if you, just, have questions, we have a reference name, we've got it, such, such, for you, and we follow, like, the, the, uh, important, important, have, have, that, so, that, where you go, basically.
We just need, we just need to ensure that, uh, the BOE members have adequate bandwidth. They may have to come here and conduct the training, so.
And it's efficient, we try to be in modern times, I've found, that, uh, sometimes, uh, it's, 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 it's all that, uh, that's, uh, the chairman, the secretary, and so on, so forth, one of the big word involved, was, it's all, uh, it's, 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 it's.
There a date that they would need to know when they need to have the training done by, or is it certain number of days before the first hearing or?
Yes, certainly, before the first hearing, and we'll work that out, of course, you know, whoever you're leading on, it's, 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 it's.
Are the hours flexible to, to work, flexible, uh, that they hold these hearings to work with the citizens and maybe work with this schedule also?
Yes, sir, he's, uh, he's, that discretion, uh, there's, like, most boards, the chairman of the board, uh, they were getting together, and, and typically, they, they come off as a, uh, first reason, if you will, what, approach, and time, sometimes they have a couple at night, seeing that many, years they have, I've, I've had one where they, and I, I've had only five years, and I've had some at night, that's one thousand five hundred. Well, they give the tempo, and they tell the work. And, uh, they might have a couple, couple on the evening, and, uh, you know, and maybe not, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not confused, the board, uh, they will, they will determine, if they, they want to have a case.
Anybody in?
Hopefully, all have five years.
I feel like after the last couple of years, I'm pretty well versed in. Be, be in a sense.
Some, some of the, back there, questions, of, and, for you, that they, follow on.
We thank you, sir.
And we're also, uh, available to the public, uh, through the years, and I have any questions, uh, I have any, any questions, just, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right, and five C is VDI quarterly update, Mr. Lee McKnight.
Good evening.
Well, I do not see him.
I haven't seen him. And it's not online, right?
Okay.
All right.
Still, uh, you done?
Well, I had some questions.
I had a few points, too, or something.
So I'll make sure we send them a nice, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, uh, next item up is five D, Henrico Doctors Hospital request for a letter of support, uh, Ryan Jensen. And Stephen Chandler, very.
Ms. Branch, just a quick question. Ms. Branch, I'm getting emails from people that's in the public that say they can't hear anything that we're saying.
I was wondering, I, I, I just had a thought as we were wrapping that one up. I don't know that that mic's on, picking up at least. Like, I can hear us talking, and I can hear them when they talk feed through the system. I cannot hear.
Not that one.
The mic at the, uh, the lectern.
Blinking green, I don't know what that means.
They not hear everybody?
I can hear.
The podium, they say.
Okay, yeah, I was, cause I was, I was.
The podium, or is that the?
Didn't sound like it's kind of true.
There is. Something, so. There you go. Thank you.
That's good. I'm pretty soft spoken anyway, so. Um. Um, Mr. Chairman Hodges and County Supervisors, thank you for giving us the opportunity to stand before you this evening. My name is Ryan Jensen. I'm the CEO of Henrico Doctors Hospital. Uh, Henrico Doctors Hospital consists of, uh, three campuses, uh, located, uh, two of which in Henrico County in Richmond, and one in Richmond City, Henrico Doctors Hospital, Param Doctors Hospital, and Retreat Doctors Hospital. We are the, uh, only level two trauma provider in Henrico County, and with that, we also serve many of the surrounding counties in the area. With that comes levels higher QD services, neurosurgery, open heart, a very strong cath lab program, cardiac program. We also have, um, one of the largest birthing programs, um, in central Virginia. We actually do most of the births, um, over about forty-five hundred. Um, the reason why we're here tonight, though, is we're part of HCA Virginia, which is our, our larger parent company. There's fourteen hospitals here in Virginia, um, six in central Virginia, and periodically, we reevaluate our services, look at our different access points in the communities that we serve. As we see different areas growing and expanding, we look for opportunities to serve those patients. And with that, uh, we have, uh, recently submitted, uh, uh, a COPN for a new hospital in Hanover County, um, near Ashland area, so under ninety-five. What I've, who I brought with me tonight is Stephen Chandler, who's our chief operating officer, who's also our project lead for this, for this project, and we'd like him to talk more about this project, and then our specific asks to, from, from this board.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and all the members of the board. Um, I, like I said, I'm Stephen Chandler, Chief Operating Officer in Henrico Doctors Hospital. There are many members of this community in King William County that choose Henrico Doctors Hospital for care, um, and as a place of employment. And, um, we like to bring the services, uh, that people need to have a vibrant community, uh, closer to this town. And so, uh, we proposed in our certificate of public need to build, uh, new hospital. It was proposed to be sixty beds, which includes, uh, fifty-four medical surgical beds and six ICU beds. It includes operating rooms, the cath lab, and emergency department, and all of the ancillary services that are, uh, part of that, including a CT and an MRI. It really is a full-service hospital, um, that definitely brings healthcare closer, uh, to, uh, to this community. Uh, the location is right off the sliding hill road, um, at, uh, exit eighty-six off I ninety-five, uh, about sixteen miles north of Richmond. Um, the reality for us, though, and what we hear from, uh, physicians and from the EMS and first responder community, is that seconds matter. Uh, seconds matter when you're having a heart attack, the seconds matter when you're having a stroke. Seconds matter when you want to get crews back out into their community serving, so that they can respond, uh, to other issues that are happening, uh, in the communities that they serve. Uh, again, this is really important part of being a vibrant community. So, um, we, as Ryan mentioned, we have filed a certificate of public need, uh, which, uh, is a, of, a process that we go through with the state, uh, health commissioner, uh, and we're just starting on that journey. Uh, but one of the things that is extraordinarily valuable in that process are letters of support from the communities that, uh, any type of healthcare entity would serve, uh, which brings us here today, and, and, and the why behind it. Uh, so we would love for, uh, the board supervisors to offer a letter of support. Uh, we would also love, uh, the board to authorize, um, Fire Chief Reeves to also offer a letter of support, uh, for our certificate of public need, um, as we go through that process. Again, those letters, uh, matter a great deal, uh, to the, um, the, the value of our application. And, um, and that's what brings us here today.
Talking distance, uh, how far is he from here? If we're, you're a pound less.
I, uh, did a quick, uh, Google map search, and I think it would take about, uh, thirty-seven minutes, um, to get to the proposed location of the hospital from where we sit today. Um, if you juxtapose that to, just to say, Henrico Doctors Hospital, our, our, uh, larger facility, uh, within the three Henrico Doctors Hospital campuses, um, it's about fifteen minutes closer.
We mentioned the level, he mentioned the level, I think, uh, what, what is that to the public?
So a level two, yeah, a level two trauma center is, uh, really, uh, that, um, that trauma center that can do, we have, um, surgeons that are within the hospital twenty-four seven. We have all of the surgical specialties associated, uh, with that, neurosurgery, orthopedic surgery, uh, facial trauma, um, thoracic surgery, et cetera, et cetera. So there, uh, other than pediatrics, there's very little that the Henrico Doctors Hospital, uh, system, uh, can handle.
And, uh, regional, what do they raise, you know?
I'm sorry.
Regional, regional, and, or regional, they're, they're what?
I don't believe that they have a trauma designation.
Okay. I just, just one.
Mr. Chair, if I may, in comparison to regional, uh, how many beds does, does regional have? I know they have a, a lot of them.
They do. I, I, I don't remember the exact number, but this is comparatively smaller, um, at sixty beds.
But, you know, you mentioned the mileage from here, but the residents of the fifth district, they would be extremely close.
Close, sir.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when you're talking about Ashland, of course, I don't think the ambulance would be going to the, the back way, but you know how close Ashland is.
I don't really call it Ashland. It's more like, you can go down.
No, sliding hills, uh, it's close to Ashland.
It is.
Very close.
It's technically not in the town of Ashland, but in geographically, it's considered. That's right. Yes, sir.
Is it gonna include the Hall of Fame?
Yes.
Now that anybody can afford to use it.
So, so do we need to make a motion or just recommend?
Think we.
It would just, yeah.
As Percy.
Yeah.
Consent us to allow Percy to send a letter.
And for the chief to send one through you would be.
Well, the chief was sending his own.
You need to, your request.
Always presented.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Yeah, of cour- of course, be happy to, um, to have, but if the, um, if you all are supportive of that, we'd appreciate it very much.
Yep, I'm happy to advance that.
So.
Me too.
Yeah, that's a question. Well, go ahead. Let's go ahead and do the vote and then.
One question.
So I'll make a motion that we authorize the county administrator and the fire chief to send.
Ms. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Maurey.
Hi.
Mr. Skalsky.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
And just a comment, if, uh, you ever consider expanding some more, come on down to King William.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Look forward to working with, uh, with you all and that on identifying maybe some areas of opportunity to serve this community even better. Yeah, thank y'all.
Thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Right. The next thing is five E, uh, DSS overview, Amanda. How do you pronounce it?
It's Tavis. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I'm just here to give an update over for DFS for the past couple of months. I started on October third. Um, since then, underneath my new leadership, the department is making, uh, great strides and continuing to build the cohesiveness of employees. Um, since October, we had six vacant positions. We currently now have three vacant positions. I'm working very hard to fill those positions. Um, all our supervisor positions are filled now. Um, with the budget, I've been working with the Department of Finance and, um, the Director of Finance to ensure that we're matching on our budget for monthly reconciliations and overall budget. Um, we're working with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, the courts, the schools to continue to build relationships. They're improving. Uh, we will be participating in the resource fair they're having at the, um, middle school on January twelfth from five to seven. This is a resource fair for students who are receiving special education services. We have improved our department interaction with the health department in which we share the building with. We've had two, um, functions together and they were a success. Uh, DSS is participating in county events. We participated in the Halloween, Thanksgiving and Christmas. All staff that were in my office were present for those events. We also participated in the Christmas dreams program. Um, we worked with the church and community members to help distribute holiday baskets. We distributed eight Thanksgiving baskets and six Christmas baskets. Our caseloads are actively improving, um, within the services unit. We're currently actively working twenty-three cases. We have two, um, international compact of placement children cases where we are working with other states. And benefits are cases that are still actively working in three thousand one hundred and thirty cases across all program benefit areas. Um, we are reached out to the job assistance center to continue to build our relationship with them and helping clients with job references, helping getting monthly job listings to, but help promote clients to become more self-sufficient. We're currently underneath three state reviews. These are funding reviews based on eligibility, um, for criteria when children come into foster care. I'm working on training in the office to get everyone properly trained in their program areas as well as cross-trained throughout the department and retraining workers to correct procedures. Some goals are for all supervisors to have a mentor with other social services agencies to fill all positions, to continue to improve community connections. And then our six-month work plan, continuing to meet deadline targets, compliance rates, um, improving communication with community connections through more face-to-face interactions. You have any questions?
Mr. Hodges, I would just like to say how happy I am that we hired her. And I would like to reach out to Mr. Ashcraft again and thank him for everything he personally did in a time of need for social services. And congratulations. I know you stepped into a lot when you, uh, took this job. I'm glad you applied.
Thank you.
I don't want to be negative because this could be old complaints, but I'm still getting a few that y'all are not responding out in the field. Is that still the way it's going?
Yes, sir.
That's what I figured. Things, bad things tend to hang around. Or bad comments.
No, we appreciate the work when it was a lot. So we're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I said, don't go.
You guys have a nice evening.
See you too.
I don't see her.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Julie Mills is here.
Oh, okay.
Miss, uh, Brown, uh, had to.
All right. It's funding future capital and staffing request.
Good evening, gentlemen. Ms. Brown was gonna present this to you guys, but she had to leave unexpectedly today for illness. So you can get me in fit. So tonight I'm presenting a brief overview of capital staffing requests for FY twenty-four as well as an overview of our revenues. If you turn to page one, you can see a comparison of FY twenty-two's budget of twenty-eight million and FY twenty-three's budget of thirty million and a chart that shows the overview of the revenues and how the revenues are spent in major categories. As we turn to the next page, you see a difference, the different avenues used to create the revenues for the county and projections on how much each will collect in FY twenty-three. As of December thirtieth, the county had collected fifty-one percent of real estate revenues for FY twenty-three. Page four, there is a six-year history of our real estate tax rate and amount of revenues generated each year. Next, we have a breakdown of how we fund the schools. The chart on page five shows what revenues create funding for the school appropriation of twelve point seven million minus the debt services of one point five million paid directly by the county to get the funds transferred to the school in the amount of eleven point one million. At the bottom of this page, we have a four-year history of the real estate tax rates and a breakdown of what part of the tax goes towards the schools and which funds the general fund. As you can see, with a tax rate of point eight three five, forty-six cents goes to the school and a little over thirty-seven cents goes to the general fund. On page five, we have a twelve-year history of our unassigned fund. Continuing on to the next page, we have a chart showing the growth of some of our departments like our sheriff's office, fire and EMS, building and planning, parks and rec and utilities. The county continues to experience stable growth. We have seen a twelve percent growth over the last twen- ten years. Our unemployment rate has dropped from two point eight percent from the twenty-twenty-one rate of three point seven. And our local sales tax revenue increased twenty-one point nine percent over the last three fiscal years. This is a revenue that's passed on to the King William and Town West Point pool divisions. On the next page, we have an overview of debt services, our current bonds, the balance of each and the expected payoff date. And the next we have our capital request. These are requests only and not county administration recommendations at this time. The recommendations will be presented on March thirteenth. Starting with our sheriff's office, we have a request for two vehicle replacements, a hundred and twenty thousand. Digital storage of records at twenty-six thousand, an impound lot at seventy-five thousand and an upgrade to our current outdated emergency medical dispatch at ninety thousand. For fire and rescue, we have a request of thirty thousand dollars for turnout gear. West Point volunteer fire and rescue has made a request for fifty thousand for future apparatus purchase and Mangahack volunteer fire and rescue at thirty thousand. We have a brush truck request. In your packet, it does say it's just a thirty, thirty thousand dollar match because of an AFD grant. Since this has been made, we did find out we did not get that grant. So we'll have to get creative on how that's gonna happen. We also have a request for life packs and Lucas devices replacements of forty thousand. For parks and recreation, they requested a twenty-five thousand dollar portable stage and upgrades the road and water lines, the rec park at one point five million. Regional animal shelter requested sick room addition of hundred and fifty-six thousand, sick room housing equipment at thirty-five thousand and smoke and detect, smoke detection and fire alarm system at fifteen thousand. And preserving and improving our capital assets that we currently have, there's a request for central garage, water tower maintenance and lightning protection at two hundred thousand and mason repair repair at the administrative building of forty thousand. Continuing on some general requests for an emergency operating center at station one, design and construction of new, of a new building for DSS and the health department, design and construction of a new library, purchase and design of a sports complex. For station one, there's been a request to make parking accommodations ADA compliant. And looking ahead to FY twenty-five, there's a design village layout between old and new courthouse request and a Zora and Sandy Point State Forest upgrade request. Lastly, we have staffing requests for FY twenty-four. The animal shelter has requested a program coordinator with a salary and benefits budget of forty-three thousand five seventy-three. Planning and zoning has requested a planner with a total budget of eighty thousand one twenty-two. And our commissioner revenue has three budget requests. Her first option would be an in-house assessor with a budget of seventy-four to seventy-five. If that is denied, she would like to request a second option of a deputy commissioner with a budget of fifty-two thousand. We have a request to, for IT, for our specialist at sixty-five thousand. That would be taking Todd or part-time to full-time. That's not an additional person. That's just increasing his hours. Um, a request for building permit and GIS tech at sixty thousand and an additional employee at VJ triple C A at forty-six thousand. At the bottom, we have two current positions or a current position that Lori would like to reclassify as an animal care tech with a current salary of twenty-eight thousand. She would like to reclassify her as an animal care supervisor at forty thousand seven seventy-two. And then we have an increase of fifty thousand dollars overall to various departments to increase manager positions to directors. And that is our request right now. Do you have any questions for us?
Going back to page ten, I guess that's how you're looking at them. Uh, are those in any particular order?
Which one's page ten?
Capital request. It's two.
They are not. They're just in order with the department.
Just one.
Yes, sir. Just with the department.
Mr. Mr. Ashcraft, if we found running the budget for the, uh, Department of Social Services and help building, how would we utilize the existing space?
It would have a domino effect. Uh, as you know, we have outgrown, uh, the space in this building. So we would move, um, the offices occupied by the, uh, the juvenile justice office, move them up to where, uh, social services is now. And then we would utilize the building in which, uh, juvenile justice is in there. Um, it was.
Is the first building.
Yeah, by the post office.
Okay.
Ms. Mills, just a quick question and you might not know, I mean, with these proposed, you think that we can make it, but the budget that we have, are we gonna have to go up? Or you probably don't know.
That would be a Ms. Brown question. I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I've been asking that and I'm not sure anybody is in the presence of those.
Okay, well, if there's any more questions, thank y'all for your awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Next, uh, request to hire EDA staff person, Kenny Holter.
Hold right.
Hold right. See you online.
No, he's right there.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Coming down the side of.
Good evening, board.
Evening.
Thank you, Chairman, for having me here today. Uh, don't know if it was my position to follow up after that, but maybe I could talk about how we can make some money here. So I've come here for the request today. Uh, the EDA would like to ask to have a paid EDA, uh, person, uh, put into the budget. The, uh, just want to talk about a little story. I keep this presentation short, but there was a business that, you know, I was able to assist in bringing from another county into this county, um, the little tractor placed down. Uh, you know, they, they said what they were looking for. I found a piece of real estate. I connected them. They got a great rental and they've been having a thriving business now for two years. You know, we met with the zoning department. So it was basically from working with someone who had a need that wanted to bring it to the county and we pulled it all the way through to a completion. I know that's a really small scale. We like to have really big ones, but hey, you gotta start somewhere. So I looked for them to be here for many years, hopefully expand their business and then also the tax revenue. So the purpose and goal, uh, for, you know, the paid EDA person would be to grow existing businesses, uh, establish new businesses, uh, work on site characterization, uh, for the state, uh, utility infrastructure advancement, water, sewer, internet and then grant writing. Uh, all these things will increase business, uh, increase businesses, M and T, uh, commercial property value and be a big, uh, tax revenue for the, for the county. So the two options that we considered, uh, you know, if you, I've come to ask for a paid position, but we also did look at a consultant style, just the way the two different options. Uh, next slide please. So having a full-time, uh, EDA representative will achieve a bunch of goals. I already spoke about many of them. But we're looking to grow the existing businesses. So that's this individual to go out, work to help expand by expanding the businesses, will hire more, they do more sales, will get more taxes, uh, establish new businesses, bring them from other counties or uh, businesses from other states looking to come to King William County. Uh, site characterization, uh, work with property owners, developers and realtors to help land some of these big fish and bring these to the county, uh, utility infrastructure, um, water, sewer, internet. Uh, we did a great job bringing internet to most of the county. Uh, water and sewer is gonna be a big holdup for getting larger businesses to come, especially on the three sixty corridor and other areas. And then also grants, because with some of the utilities, grants can definitely help us with that. Next slide please. So our anticipated cost would be a, a fifty-five thousand dollar salary. Um, benefits would be roughly thirty percent. And then we came up with a fifteen thousand dollar annual budget. So that could be travel if this individual were to use their own vehicle. Um, but the current mileage and then other miscellaneous expenses would bring us to a total of one hundred and eight thousand, oh, sorry, one oh eight five hundred. So I already kind of talked about this. I'll just breeze over it, but how can the position pay for itself? Um, people, meals tax, M and T, real estate. Anytime we build a current business, we take one of our fields and then a business goes there. All these are gonna grow, especially if it's a restaurant. Now, I know that we're a rural community and the people in community definitely want to see it rural. Just because we bring a business doesn't mean that it's gonna be a bunch of flashing lights. We do have zoning. But there is things like small manufacturers in places like North Carolina and other places in Virginia to where they operate and can manufacture a product and it really does not disturb. You can still farm around it. It actually looks really nice in many cases. So sometimes when we talk about bringing businesses in, people throw red flags, but we can still definitely keep the agricultural rural landscape. Uh, we can create tourism opportunities, uh, you know, wineries come, uh, a family comes and does a wine tour. They fill up the gas tank. They get lunch. So they drop their money, drop the money throughout the county as they come, so they can work on tourism. Um, and then, you know, just to glance over it, we have grant writing. Grant writing could be a great way to go get the funds to do things like water and sewer. Uh, next slide please. So we looked at the consultant, uh, EDA specialist style. Um, and we did poll and we did talk to some and some other counties that use this style. Uh, would cost about fifty thousand plus minus. They, they do work hourly. They do work contractual. So the more that they do, the more that they're gonna charge, but it, it can be less than that. Um, we would also negotiate in that they would have to attend the meetings on, be part of that, uh, mileage vehicle. Other expenses would be on them. Uh, just, just some different ways that we can craft it. But the one common thread that we did see is when we do, when you go a consultant route, you have to be very focused. You have to give them say, three pieces of property and say, get this rezoned. This is the kind of business we need here, or for just a general example, help us get water and sewer from central garage to Alet. Just be laser focused on that. Because if they just go knocking on doors, trying to build existing businesses, it'll just burn through a lot of, um, a lot of money. And then also we may not see those results as opposed to just being focused on a particular task. Next slide please. So I had thirty-five thousand in the top right corner. So that would be on the low side if we had a consultant style. Like I said, I did fifty thousand plus minus. So let's just say thirty-five thousand. Do the, uh, like I said, focused nature of the consultant. Do the, like I said, focused nature of the consultant work, they'd just be laser focused and for us to see really the results of it. Excellent. So until the final recommendation from the E D A would be to have a full-time paid person who would represent at our meetings. The county administrator has done an amazing job of leads that currently come in and through the zoning office. But we're looking at behalf of the E D A to bring the leads through ourselves and create those opportunities in addition to where organically comes. Any questions?
My first question would be, do we realistically think that we can hire a full-time individual at that salary range?
So that's a great question. So the town of Ashland, actually, they they had a rehire, but on theirs, I believe, is sixty thousand. And I got to actually talk with the individual, very nice person, believe that they came actually from another state, but always worked in that line of work. And they they see good results. There is always the risk that we can hire somebody as any higher position. They might last a year or two, and then we're back on the market trying to find somebody else. We would like to find that person who can at least stay with us for a number of years and cultivate leads that come.
Right, and so I guess that gets kind of down to it for me is is if we do want to support hiring a full-time person. My concern is that fifty five thousand is not going to attract a very good applicant pool. I mean, I I and I'll give you, and I'm trying to find it here, but I'm not going to find it in time for this discussion, but I know that the town recently just just advertised, they may have already hired the position because I I don't see it on here anymore. But just a tourism manager, I think is what they termed the position, and their hiring range was above seventy five thousand dollars. Really? So you know, I don't know if we want to bank on fifty five being a realistic range, just for planning purposes.
So we were advised based on the pay scale of the county in in the level that 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 would be around. So we I don't believe that we could have had this person be the most highly paid person in the county.
Uh, no doubt about that. I just, you know.
So that that's where that number kind of came into for the presentation. I I do have concerns that if if we do go put it out, you know, who are we going to get for that? I mean, we might hit a home run and and get that right person.
Uh, no, that's that's just part of the bad is something that stood out to me is that 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 may be a little bit on the lower range of what we can probably expect to pay.
If I may not cut it, are you finished? I watched the the E D A presentation at the last meeting, and it seemed like it was some dissension amongst the members. I think when when y'all came to vote, I think pretty much everybody voted in favor of it. My concern is it's such a large group, and it seems like arriving at at a decision has been a challenge. If if you had a E D A, I'm not a E D A consultant specialist, would y'all, do you think y'all could find a way to listen to them?
So so the consultant, Mr. Governor, consultant or the the paid person? So so the pay.
To listen to the the recommendations of whether it be a consultant or a paid person. I think that the E D A hired, I can't remember, was it R K G or or? And it seems like in some of those meetings, the the group didn't didn't necessarily agree with them. That's one of my concerns. If if it is going to be a hire, you know, the the group, we also had a discussion too about making the group smaller because of so many diverse personalities there.
So so your question about the R K G, that's a consultant style, and after that, that's why we had thought to go towards having a a paid person on staff. Another advantage of that is that individual would be at our meetings, not seeing that they're going to run it, but they would be the eyes and ears throughout the day. And we can be cultivating the business and then work with us. That's where we think like in R K G, a consultant style, we don't have eyes and ears on them. The county doesn't have eyes and ears throughout the day.
Yep, I understand that also.
And then to your question about, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, about the number of members. We have gone in a couple of different directions. I must say, I think I'm two and a half years in. We've got a really solid group of very focused people. We just know the tools that we have in our toolbox, and we're trying to make the most of it.
This this employee would be totally controlled by the E D A membership, correct?
So it would be, if Mr. Ashcraft, if you would step in. This, so the idea behind the pay D A is that they would also work with county administration to project talent on it.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think the E D A at this at this point in time would benefit from having a staff or that was dedicated to them in the capacity of not just being an economic development person, but they would actually be the director or executive director of the operation. Right now, the rest of staff is kind of hodgepodge in our in our relationship with E D A, and we all come from different directions. We have certain people that are doing the clerical. We are supporting myself and Mr. Hudgens are supporting it mostly through staff. Successful EDAs that I'm familiar with, whether that person be full-time or part-time, they are executive director. They work with the leadership of the of the of the body to set the agenda. They are responsible for setting up the the field trips that might take place. The people that need to come and make presentations in front of the board. It it works. And just from being here for, again, thirteen thirteen short months, if this group, if this accord, that is charged with a major responsibility, is going to move forward, I believe it has to be done with with support. And to me, this is the first step. It would be to to have a person that, whether you want to call him, report to them. Obviously, whoever would be elected chairman at their next meeting, they would be the the key liaison with the remaining members of the board. But county staff is not going to take a step back in our support for them. Matter of fact, it will probably be easier for us to support them by them setting up the appointments, and we'd be a participatory group that would that would assist in that regard. So I I know how we all hesitate to to add new positions. I think this is one that is very valuable, and it's not just valuable because we have another set of hands and eyes and 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 feet that are going to go out and and hit the pavement. It's going to add structure to your organization of the economic development authority that I think have possibly been lacking over the years.
I guess I didn't ask the question correctly. This this specific position, they would be directed by the E D A, not not county staff.
That's correct.
They would control the.
If it was county employee.
They would be a county employee. They would be on on the county's payroll. They would be part of the the, at least when we say they're on the payroll, they run through the county system. Now, how how the funding would go, the E D A, if they're given a designated amount of funding, whether through your appropriation or through other means, there's been discussion about developing property. The E D A is eligible for the right grants, just as the rest of the county is. There's ways for them to generate revenue that they can call their own, and we're working on on that.
They the money that they have now, how much funds, how much funding do you have at this point?
There's a.
I was hoping Mr. Hudson, sorry.
There's a set amount of money that was designated for economic development a couple of years ago. I believe it was close to two million dollars.
That's one point.
And possibly about a little less than seven hundred thousand is now in that in that account. Most of that is going to broadband.
So this this item, I guess where I'm going with this, this item wouldn't necessarily have to be budgeted into our budget. They're just asking approval to do this, correct?
If if you chose to use that money, because that's money that has to be approved by the board supervisors at that time, if you chose to use that money for, say, a twelve month, you would have certainly enough funding in there to carry it for one one year, and then we can see as we move forward what opportunities avail themselves. Because I do think the next step is for them to recommend property in which they would be eligible to develop. I think that's the next.
And I've been I've been a proponent of of this until I really started watching some of the the meetings, and you know, maybe it's just me. It seems like a lot of back and forth, let's say. I just want to make sure, you know, to satisfy me that the other members can feel however they feel that y'all would listen and, you know, take take the advice of. You know, that's that's where I'm at with it.
And I guess in a follow-up to that, mine would be in in how we plan to structure this is where accountability is in the end, because we're saying that they're going to be directed by the E D A, you know, ultimately, it's our money they're spending unless the E D A finds some funding source other than the general fund. So, you know, I I would I would certainly like, unless the E D A gets to a point where they're funding the position out of their own coffers for the accountability to still be with county administration and ultimately board. It's kind of going to have to be, really, but that's that's how it's going to have to be structured if we're going to spend even money that we've appropriated for the purpose of economic development, the still money that's been appropriated by the board. That's not money that the E D A has brought in and dedicated to the task. So, yes, I would just like it to, however we structure this, for it to be clear that the ultimate, ultimate accountability of of this position and whoever fills it is with you.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, the actual mechanics of this individual, it wouldn't be to point, Mr. Gover, you know, with our board, it's not like we have a Monday morning call with we we met, you know, with this individual because, you know, they'd be the quarterback in a sense. And, you know, they could update us on their activities for the week or the cap off week. But the daily activities would would work inside this this building with the county administrator and administration group to complete the goals. As one leads and opportunities come through the front door, they would then be filtered to this individual. And the idea wouldn't be to have a fun necessarily carry this individual four or five years. It would be definitely for them to be on the county, the payroll budget.
One thing I'd like to suggest is, let's call it your next pitch to the board, is a solid job description of what the expectations are, what, how do you measure performance? We had an economic development consultant that I dare say we never saw a single success story out of it. We don't want that to happen again. I do agree that Mr. Ashcraft needs to needs to manage this individual until such time as if the program is successful, I think a year from now that board should look at it and maybe move and migrate to another standalone position, but I just want to make sure that we're getting, setting expectations of this individual, being able to measure success or failure or anything in between. And just know what's going on, because they're going to have a lot of leeway to be able to get out in the state or even cross state to develop leads and bring business to the county. Make sure that and I I agree with Mr. Moskowski. I don't think fifty is going to do it. But we have to, we have to beat the bushes first, see what's out there.
We got to start somewhere. As I'm sitting here thinking about it too, to Mr. Garbage's point, I've not reviewed any of the meetings, but I've I've heard that in talking to people, I think in part of our as we kind of mulled this over in order to get us all comfortable with it, I think we would be very comfortable if there was an idea that the E D A had a kind of a unity of of purpose and vision. You know, because if if we've got, you know, first of all, maybe we need to consider how many people are on there, and if it's too many, you know, because I know the reason that we had initially expanded that was to work in subcommittees. That's not really been something that's been happened, just because that idea just kind of went, went by the way, said, and it's fine. That it it was probably practically difficult to pull off, but you know, if we've got, you know, a bunch of individuals, only one person in in, say, nine different directions, it's not going to be very productive, you know, maybe we're better off with five. You know, just to kind of try to point the vision of that authority. And, you know, it doesn't have to be a singular direction, but not two opposing directions, certainly. So, you know, let's let's kind of mulle that over too as we move forward with this, but I agree with that. I'd like to see a next step be a more refined vision for the position, and then also maybe fine tuning the vision of the E D A, just so we as the board, if we're going to outlay this and 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 give you guys this opportunity to have this, so that we know that we give you a position like this, they're going to have a focus, and they're going to have a mission, and it's not going to be to wrangle the E D A. It's it's going to be to attract and retain new business.
Absolutely, thank you. And and there again, this was a first time pass. It's something that, you know, we had talked about as far as the next steps. So just thank you and, you know, being in front of you today for the ask for the first time in probably many years, I think. It's it's a start. If if there was a way that we knew to trial it before making that investment, we have thought of that as a group. We just don't know of any way to do that other than potentially a consultant, but we just know that we're not going to get that consultant's full attention to give us our results. Thank you.
I said, let's say, we don't like what everybody says, as I was saying, this is before Mr. Ashcraft or Mr. Holder, I was on with Mr. Garber too, as Mr. Moore said. And you may not remember Travis, but dropped my memory. We had an economic on. But I thought we only paid twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah, we didn't even get twelve thousand dollars worth of stuff. A whole lot of money. I think his total, I think we split it between West Point. I think his total salary between the two of us was thirty thousand.
Okay.
But I'll tell you, after we cut him loose, he's still on West Point's payroll. He's still working.
He didn't do anything for us. That's what I was saying. Mr. Moore said, how are we going to prove that we're going to get, and like I said, we've just spent, like Mr. Garber said, we had thirty one new positions.
Narrative that Mr. Kelly didn't do anything was probably not.
Well, he didn't get his money's worth. He didn't get thirty five thousand dollars.
Well, I think some of that was Tea Party narrative. I think he had to demonstrate what he was working on, and in some instances, he just wasn't given time to see this thing. I've seen value in this for a while. My concern has been, do we have a a an actionable vision that if we're going to employ somebody full-time to execute, would that person know what to do? Because that's going to have to come, not just from the E D A, from the board of supervisors as well, but primarily, you know, the E D A is going to have to to be kind of the jumping off point where, all right, you know, we want to focus on these core clusters of of industries or businesses.
Or properties.
Right, and and without that, I don't know how we could measure success at all, because you're going to have nine different opinions on what success is.
And if I might add, you know, in my polling of talking to different E D A consultants, you know, they'd said to the point of Mr. Greenwood, they had worked on a project, per say, twelve months, their term was up, their contract was over, month fourteen, it popped off. So it's it's not that any work that they do necessarily is is wrong. It's just that you may not see the results for twelve months later on a particular project or maybe even a prospect. So, but that was something that I was told by the consult, like different consultant.
I'll take you back to the first, the story that you led with, which is the just the legwork that you put in to bring in a a single business. I think you now you've seen demonstrably what it takes to do that. And it's, it it's not a snap of the finger for sure, and and it takes perseverance, and it takes patience, and not everybody sees that that work's even going on. All of a sudden, a business shows up, and that's they just know that it's there. They don't know what type of of legwork took in to to bringing even the small business, which, you know, we we love to have.
Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. And back to your point, if if that business owner and property owner didn't come to terms on a rental agreement, you know, of property, then they might not even be here today. So.
Externalities that you can't even control is whatever position.
Everything worked out. But well, thank, thank you so much. Any more?
Question, if I could.
Yes.
Have, like I said, I've watched quite a few of your meetings. I don't think that y'all have had a physical conversation, maybe you did, and and I missed that one, about the what you consider the ideal number for your membership. Have y'all had any? Uh, have y'all had any conversations like that or do you plan on?
I believe a meeting or two ago, it was brought to the attention, uh, I think it was brought by the board. To the E D A about the number of members and then it was the, the districts that represent. Um, but that's about, uh, need to, something that we could relook at. Um, but no changes were made accordingly. I do believe that our next meeting, we have, um, recommendations.
You know, I, like I said earlier, when I volunteered for the Parks and Rec, which has nothing to do with us. But I found that the larger the membership in any group, it's. We can't even get enough people to come to the meetings for, to, to establish a corner. So to me. The larger the group, to me, it just seems like the meetings that I've seen, it's just, it's almost too diverse. You know, I don't know that, that you feel that way, uh, and, and I appreciate the other members of the E D A being in here tonight too. It's good to see y'all. I'd like to see y'all maybe have that conversation, an honest conversation about it.
If I may, um, gentlemen, at the last, or not, maybe not the last one, but at one of the. Last two E D A meetings, the E D A board did vote, um, to decrease membership to seven members.
So is that, is that through, uh, attrition?
Yes, there are currently eight members and two come up for, um, reappointment in June of this year. And so only one of those two positions would be refilled.
So that's still gonna be eight?
That would lead at seven.
Seven, what was that? Okay, so it's eight, right?
There are currently eight members right now to authorize in June.
If you could just have a, a conversation and, and see if they think that that's an ideal number or still. Too diverse, you know?
Yes, I will, Mr. Gover.
Mr. Garber, you're not aware to formalize the whole process. It has to go through legislative, the general assembly.
I think that's something to increase. I think we're authorized.
I think we agree in our discussions that if we just leave the maximum there, but agree to only.
We, we can, uh, we can appoint at a, at a level that we're comfortable with.
You, um, you all are specifically authorized to go up to nine. The statutory minimum absent. Um, other authorization is seven. So if you wanted to go below seven, there'd have to be additional approval. You're right now allowed to go up to nine, but seven is sort of the baseline.
Those recommendations don't be active. Near pictures.
Well, from what I hear is a boarding list, um, hearing wrong, uh. And we need to put this on, they'd be employee on, in the budget package to review and look at and discuss.
It's on the E D A again, uh, uh, Wednesday night to discuss. And then it sounds like possibly the next step would be for them to develop a, a job description. And then come back to the future work session to, uh, to discuss with the board.
Uh, and I don't know how well these things work, but it, it sounds to me that the E D A has probably gone about as far as you can without something like this.
Uh, Mr. I, I would, uh, with the current, it, you know, we, like for instance, myself, I. You know, reached out to large companies and the first phone call doesn't get it done. It takes multiple phone calls following up and, and unless that's. Not to make excuses of our twenty four seven job, it's, they call back, we miss the call. It's just, you know, this, this point person could. Constantly stay in contact, um, and then also network with other counties. Uh, who've had success, because some of these larger businesses, it's the same development people. So if they had their contact info, they could meet with them via Zoom via. So I, I don't necessarily see the board itself meeting. This would be this point person for the E D A meeting for these decision makers. It's a lot of work. It's a, it's its own job. The, the great thing about economic development is that the county benefits from. You know, tax dollars, it brings jobs, it brings amenities, you know, we talked about pharmacy. You know, if we could through our efforts, bring that. You know, look at how it's gonna benefit the community. So E is very important. Fourteen million county, also us being successful is great for the county too. Thank you so much.
And I'm assuming the next big. And this is dealing with the A T Vs on private groups discussion.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I guess it was back in November. When I was on leave of absence that this, uh, matter came up by a number of citizens. In the subdivision. And since then, I believe the sheriff and, uh, the county attorney, uh, have weighed in, uh, to a certain extent. Trying to provide some, uh, parameters as to what you can and cannot do when it comes to, uh, legislating. A T Vs in the subdivision. So I'd like to either turn it, uh, over to the county attorney for what comments, uh, he may have. And then Sheriff, if you have anything that you would like to add, please join me, uh, uh, at the podium. So Max can start the discussion.
Sure, I'm happy to. I, I had a, a few conversations with, um, Mr. Hudgens about, about this issue and. Sort of how to frame what the options are for the county and there are, um, limited avenues through which the board of supervisors could address. Um, an issue like that was presented to the board in November. There are general laws that apply to A T V use, um, and, and those apply without board action. Um, most of that is not applicable to a cer- circumstance such as this where. The, the A T V use is actually on private property. Um, at the permission of the people who have rights over that private property. The only other options are a general ordinance of applicability throughout the county to address public. Health, safety, welfare concerns associated with A T Vs. Um, addressing motor, motorized noise through the noise ordinance. Or you could try to craft some sort of zoning regulation dealing with the use of property. But that would be, uh, it would have to be uniform throughout the zoning district. So, um, those are sort of the big buckets of options, none of which. Sort of neatly fit with the issues that were presented, um, for the, the use of the A T Vs on the private rights of what.
Mr. Hudges, if I may, you were probably asked the question today if we could approach it the same way that we did previously. The, uh. Dogs running at large, but each individual subdivision, that was driven, that question was driven by me and I was hoping that we could approach it, approach it that way. It seems like we can't do it that way.
The dogs running at large enabling statute specifically authorizes. An ordinance to be crafted for these, any areas throughout the county that the board is interested in addressing. And at any times throughout the year that the board is interested in addressing them through the ordinance. So there is specific authority for dogs running at large. For that, those types of, um, customized treatments.
So our only option, if I understand correctly, would be to, it would have to be countywide. Can it be R one only or?
Yes, you could, you could create areas of the county that are uniformly applicable such as. In residential subdivisions, in subdivisions of X number of houses. Um, you could do a zoning district wide regulation, um, but it. Wouldn't be specific like you could dogs running at large to. By ordinance meets and bounds for describing this particular area where, you know, between May and August, dogs cannot run at large.
I know these people are really struggling. Uh, I spoke to Mr. Smith again today. And, you know, I just ran that possibility value and I told him at the time, I didn't know whether we could do that or not and I've seen now that we can. But. These, these people are really struggling, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is, but if we can do anything. We might save one life. You know, these kids, now they know that it is, it is no authority. And, and nothing that we can physically do. And, you know, I was, we were all kids at one time, I believe it or not, and, and you know what you do. You know, when, when you know that it's no authority out there and no one can do anything to you for doing what you're doing. You're gonna find a way to continue to do it. And I don't know that, that countywide would, would, you know, doing it countywide would be a bad thing.
So I, I will clarify, it's not that, um, nothing can be done, uh. They are private rights of way that are subject to particular, I, I'm going to assume use restrictions or other private covenants. That are related to the original division, uh, you know, division and development of that, that property. They just happen to not be dedicated public right of way. There are mechanisms of private enforcement. Um, and changing the, the sort of private rules that apply to use of property that are. Um, extraneous to what the county can do. So it's, there are other avenues or concerns to be addressed. Just through private meetings.
So are you saying that the? The roads are not dedicated?
Correct. Nothing within internal to that timberland estates is dedicated to public use.
Okay, to, so is for it to be dedicated to public use, what would they have to do? Would, would? Those roads have to come to the state highway system?
Correct. Within the county, it would be secondary system.
Okay, that, that's not gonna happen.
That's where, do we have any option to provide a mediation resource for the two opposing groups?
I would see nothing wrong with the county offering to, you know, engage in discussions to help. Two sides come together, two citizen groups, uh, there's nothing wrong with that.
Well, I found out a long time ago, if you're in a neighborhood and you don't try to get along with your neighbors, it's a pretty good chance you're not. And I don't, I don't foresee anything changing. That particular subdivision goes back many years, as I told y'all before. Uh, actually physically owned a lot in there many years ago. It is no homeowners. Per se association, they don't have anything other than a road maintenance agreement.
Or does that road maintenance agreement?
It's just basically.
Offer them an avenue to, to try to enforce something on this. I mean, those A T Vs are causing damage to roadway or something like that.
Well, the problem is each, each individual, uh, homeowner or lot owner. They pay a maintenance fee and they have equal access to that road. So, so to say that some, anybody on A T V is trespassing unless they come from, which we have also heard. Unless they come from another subdivision or a house that is not a part of that subdivision.
Here's, here's my problem with the whole, is that when, when you. Make the choice to live in a community that's governed in that manner. And you gotta find a way to govern with the tools that you have. I, I can't see supporting doing anything countywide to solve an issue that's going on. In one, one subdivision. I, I just can't, I can't see it. They, as, as has been mentioned, you know, they've got private. Ways that they can enforce this and if the covenants and then the, the usage agreements.
There's no covenants. That's the problem. So, so the question would be, can they do a after the fact codes and covenants? By a majority of the individuals that live in there, can they craft codes and covenants after the fact?
I, I, you have to look at the specific road maintenance agreement, some covenants or, which is essentially a covenant that applies. They can be amended by certain majorities of the, uh, property owners, but that's a very fact dependent. Inquiry.
And, and they would have to be the ones to physically enforce it also.
How would you allow them to enforce that or even get, e- even be involved in advising that because I can't. I don't see where they'd have to target the number one to do it and you're gonna cause problems.
Un- unless it was a county ordinance, no one could enforce it other than them going through, uh, homeowners and, and doing it that way. And they would still have to be the ones that enforce it. Correct?
I don't see that working.
It probably would.
It's at the meeting, it seemed like about fifty fifty, but I, it may not be in, in the.
Well, we had a set of signatures, which I have a petition right here. Uh, I forget what the number was. It was, it was probably, it was over half. Of the residences. Now, it might be outstanding lots who those people also have. Their rights.
My, my first piece of advice to them then would be to consult their lawyers as to whether or not they can alter their covenants by majority vote to disallow the uses that they're. Just please let.
Well, I'm not gonna say anything. I think you guys have the sentiment, same sentiment I have. Uh, I, I don't know that opening it up to the entire county is gonna be beneficial. I think it may create more of an issue. Uh, than it is gonna help. And I, and I do sympathize with those folks up there. I wouldn't wanna live in there and have four wheels running down the road all hours, even either, uh. But our hands are tied, we can't do it so much. And we get, we've gotten a lot of calls up there in the last, uh, couple of months. But when the deputy arrives, of course they are either gone or they parked them or whatever. So there's not a lot we can do, even if we, we see them, there's not a lot we can do. Uh, just the presence of the car coming through, it may help deter, but I think Mr. Garber's right, that they now know. That there's not a lot we can do. So you poking the bear a little bit up there, I think with, uh, some of that's going on. I, I think, I think it's getting, the tensions are getting. Stronger on, on both sides of that and, uh, and I, and I, and I don't know what the solution is, you know, it. But it is an issue.
But didn't most of the residents know that when they purchased?
Well, I, I can't answer that, but I know a lot of those families have been out a long time before four wheels became very popular. You know, and, and now, now they are and every, everybody.
Well, it's been an issue, uh, I touched on it a while ago. I don't think I ever finished my train. I thought probably thirty years ago. Uh, a youth was just about killed on, on, at the time, they were three wheelers.
That's right.
Uh. You know, they're dangerous, you know, the parents, all parents think that their kids, uh, don't do anything wrong. But let's say it, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but so far as, you know, they have also complained about trespassing on individual lives. And what I've told them is that can be driven by complaint. They've got to file, file a complaint. And then it'll go, you know, through the courts. I think their biggest complaint, you know, you, we've heard, you and I have heard just about everything that's going on. Anyway.
Who trust them and they're gonna have to notice.
Well, well, you know, generally speaking, yeah, and generally speaking, when, uh, when someone is trespassing. If you call the sheriff's department, same, same type thing, they're gonna, you know, and unless that individual. Pursues it and files it himself, files a complaint. That's, you know, that's a process.
I guess the, the secondary thing for me, or perhaps even primary thing is, is I'm not sure what type of. Relief they want us to give them.
They're just looking, they're looking for, at this point, I guess they were hoping for an ordinance. That would give them. Some relief. In other words, at least let those kids know that it is. Something that can be done to them. But.
Don't you think it's only gonna, you could probably do hours, maybe. I don't know how you.
No, I, I think they're all over the place on, 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 when the events are happening.
And that's what I'm getting.
Yeah. No, that's just, that's just like a no, a noise ordinance is almost non-enforceable also.
And, and it just, it's, it's further complicated by the fact that this isn't even, it, that they're private.
Oh, if, if, if they were staying maintained roads, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Right, all you have to do is catch them on the road. It's done, but, um, so, yeah, uh, all, all I can say for now, that, that, there's really the options that are handed us are not. Nothing that really is gonna win broad support because we're not gonna put an ordinance countywide that restricts. Yeah, the use of, use and enjoyment of property, countywide, it's all a problem in subdivision. That I, I feel like their belief that they're looking for, they're gonna have to seek through their own. Their own means, uh, you know, civilly or by altering some type of covenant or something like that. And I mean, you know, you hear it all the time. People, people move to neighborhoods to escape, you know, the, the, the big bad HOAs that, you know, fuss about placement of trash cans and what color your. Uh, you know, your fence posts are, um, you know, here we have kind of the, the, the polar opposite of that and, um. You know, but that's.
But there is, I can tell them that they, there might be an option for them to legally change. Either that road maintenance agreement or either create. Uh, homeowner, uh, codes and covenants or whatever in, in the subdivision that it, it may be.
I think he said that he needed to seek legal.
Yeah, yeah, he did, he did, but I'm just asking him.
We're not, we can't advise.
I won't, I won't be rendering that advice, but, but to your question, there are, there is an ability to enforce private nuisance in any circumstance. And, um, it, it would depend on. And, um, i- it would depend on what the terms of that road maintenance agreement or the underlying covenants that go along with the purchase of their properties. What the terms of those are, but that, those would be viable avenues for private enforcement.
Okay, I'll tell them.
Do work plans or?
Do you wanna do that now, Mr. Chairman, or not the bylaws?
Yeah, I think, I think we were gonna finish everything, go back to the bylaws so that folks that didn't wanna.
All right, Chairman, if you go to page forty-eight of your, of your board packet or your, uh, tablet, whi- whichever you're using. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I might, uh, take a moment of personal privilege, I wanna congratulate you and Mr. Garber, uh, for being elected by the board. Serving a leadership position. Staff is certainly committed to, to working with you and certainly all the members of the board. As you, uh, as you guide us through what I really feel is gonna be a very important year for us. It was, uh, a few days ago that I was fortunate to be able to pin a, a blog that listed the numerous things. That this board has already worked on to set the table for what I think is gonna be a very successful year. And, um, we stand ready to support and assist you in, in every way possible.
That's the whole board.
That's the whole board. But, and, and also in saying that, I wanna, I thank, uh, Mr. Warren. Uh, for his efforts because obviously in setting the table, there had to be leadership, uh, during that period of time and. It was a pleasure to be able to work with you in that capacity. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if you recall, uh. When I was, when I was, uh, brought on board. Uh, the first six month period was an opportunity for me to get to know the staff and to, uh, try to get a handle on. What I felt, felt were the priorities of yours and also the administration as we move, uh, as we move forward. And one of the models. That I've had success with during my career was to develop a six month work plan. Uh, many people work longer, sometimes some work shorter. But, uh, I found success in, in taking, uh, your, your goals and objectives six months at a time. And they tie into your budget document, your comprehensive plan, uh, your utility plan, your rec plan, whatever you're doing. And staff is charged and held accountable for what they, uh, for what they put down in that six month period. Well, before you deny it, is the first results of that exercise, uh, it ran through, uh. July, uh, through, uh, December, or excuse me, yeah, July through December of twenty twenty-two. And during the course of that time, uh, each department head knew exactly what they're, they were charged with. And there were times where we added some, uh, of their goals. Uh, we took some away based on just various factors that may come up during the course of the year. Or the six month period, but we did come up with an average, uh, uh, percentage in which they were successful in their goals. And, uh, you can see that on page fifty, that, um, as, as a team. Uh, and for a first exercise in which, uh, they, they will get used to this, it was a three point four success rate out of four point oh. And that wasn't, to me, that was, that was very good. Um, it's going to get better. I like to have it at least three, seven, three, eight during the course of every. Of every period, but you have to start somewhere. And you can see the various departments and how they, uh, were successful in completing their, uh. In their goals. Uh, I wouldn't say even from the top to the bottom, that there wasn't a lot of effort that was put into it. Um, there were just times where a lot of these, uh, goals and some of these departments are, have been carried over into the next period. Because they just ran out of time. And it wasn't neglect to what they were trying to do. It was just, we've had to move on to the next six months. Or later even to get that, uh, uh, to get that, uh, accomplished. There's two hundred and sixteen goals that are, uh, in this, uh, in this six month period, you can see, uh, the plan. Uh, by department, uh, all the way through, uh, the document. Uh, what I would always like for the board supervisors to do is to read each department. If you feel like that there's something that is significantly missing in any of these, uh, uh, goals and objectives, we certainly wanna get them in there. We try, as I said, to take all of the, your work that you've done already. Budget, comprehensive plan, all the other plans that we, uh, that we have. Special projects that, uh, that have been going on. We always want to include them along with a combination of things that are gonna continue to build our department. That could be additional training. That could be additional programs, that could be new policies that we'll be presenting to the board, you know, whatever it might be. You don't need to take any action on this. Uh, it's an administrative work plan. But we do certainly want you to be on board with it and, uh, want you to, to be comfortable that this is what you want. Your administration to be working on over this next six months. Opened any questions you might have?
Not really a question, but the, the lowest was facilities and maintenance.
Yeah, and.
Did you look at their page?
Well, I was gonna say to their defense, they have far, far more, far more goals and objectives. So it's obviously much easier for them to, to not get, uh, completed. But you'll see that what was in the previous, many of that is set up to be completed in, uh, in this next six months.
I feel for two point seven on my college transfer.
Good points. Genius.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ashkoff.
Yes.
I may assume that all staff in a particular department are aware of all these items and with their purposes and.
The creation of the document is to be done by all staff through the department director or manager. And then ultimately during the course of the six month period, there should be staff meetings and points of, uh, of, of a barometer. To, to the successes and how they're, and how they're moving, yes.
So that they're part of the success.
Absolutely. This isn't a director driven or a administrator driven plan. This is a, this is an employee plan.
But a lot of these things in here, and I'm still going back to facilities and maintenance. Some of those personnel wouldn't know about everything that you got on that list.
You mean the.
Vision always what they would be looking at.
That's what I mean, the vi- no, division, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, the vision, everybody that's in the department should know what the, what their plan is, not, not necessarily countywide.
Even in a department, I, I, I can see folks that are working in it and may, have nothing to do with some of it. You see what I'm getting at?
Well.
They wouldn't know what all of the points are.
I like to think at this point in time, we're not so big. That everybody can't, can't be aware and support in some way, everything that's going on in every department. I really believe that from clerical to the folks that work outside, to anybody that's in between. It's all part of the success of, uh, of, of a department. They just may not have a hands-on or even a responsibility to deliver that goal. But I think it's their job to, to be a supporter and to help out in any way that they can.
All right, well, I say, uh, you know, good job on the first, um, the first six months and, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, look forward to even more improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you. And. The last item, which is now, I think five, I, bylaws and rules of procedures should go to the year twenty twenty.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just open the discussion, I, I don't think it's, uh, the intent of staff to walk through. All the recommendations that have been, uh, that have been presented to you this evening. If there are certain sections or even certain points that you wanna raise, I think Ms. Branch, who had a lot to do with. Putting this document together and the county attorney, uh, they're happy to address it unless you want to walk through. Uh, everything that would, that would push it some great length tonight. And I would see some heads, uh, going the opposite direction, but. Um, so that's where we are, uh, how, how we got. To the point where we felt like, uh, much of this was clean up. There were, there were things that might not have been addressed over a period of years and. We just, uh, we, we want your bylaws to be current with, uh, the operations of the county. Uh, at this time. And then, of course, there were ones that the, the county attorney weighed in that were very, very, uh, uh, good. In, uh, I think completing what the original task was, so.
So if anybody had anything that you wanna open with, uh, we're hearing.
Well, I'll, uh, kick it off, Mr. Chair from there.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, electronic participation. All right, we're, yeah, we're, this would be, uh, section one, uh. Uh, see. Two.
Actually, one of five in my book sets.
Is that on page three of seventeen?
Well, this is on the backside of that. Must be one, three. The backside of that page.
All right, so it's, it's been, it's been made purple. It starts, it's one, one dash three point one.
Yeah, oh, uh, yeah. Page three of, uh, of seventeen. You look at the bottom, you got page number.
Okay, well, anyway. It goes into the number of electronic meetings that you can have per year, which is two. Or twenty-five percent. So what, what qualifies a meeting as an official meeting? Evidently, work sessions don't count.
Yeah, they do.
So they do. So twenty-five percent of, we have two per month, that's twenty-four. Twenty plus, plus we have budget meetings. So, so how do we arrive at that number?
That, that, um, comes from state code. Yeah, that is just the maximum allowance under, uh, forty.
So, but, but if the number is two, and then you calculate, it also says, or twenty-five percent of the meetings held per calendar year. So, so what is the number?
Uh, whichever is greater. So for this body, it would be twenty-five percent of.
Twenty-five percent of the total, which would be much more.
Correct.
I was gonna say, at least if you do twenty-four, not twenty-five or six.
Okay, that, that was pretty confusing to me. And, and it was something similar to that in, in the prior. So, so the other question that I have pertaining to that, is it, is it any literature anywhere that I didn't see? In, in the maximum number of meetings that someone can physically miss a per se illness? Unable to attend, unable to do anything electronically?
There's no limit by state code to the number of remote participation a member can have for illness, family member illness. Whatever it might be. It's only the personal matter.
Okay, okay.
Just the personal one is.
So actually, we're looking at a number somewhere around ten. That, that someone could physically do, uh, electronic.
You say you're sick every time.
Yeah. Every time I look at you, I get that way.
The board, the board does still need to have a physical quorum, so, um.
That's what I wanted to ask. Is that by state code or?
That is by, that's by state code.
That doesn't make any sense. Why does the board have to decide if a person can come in or not? I mean, we all have an equal amount of representation. Why does the board decide if you can participate electronically or not?
The board has to decide whether or not participation is allowed, but it should only be disallowed if it's inconsistent with the policy. That would be what you would be adopting under the bylaws. So the bylaws serve as the guideline, the, the policy by which the board would be considering the request for participation.
Okay, that didn't happen in the past. It was just people not wanting to have them at the meeting. By a tea party.
Well, that was, that was you. Yeah, I remember it. And I explained to them that this can happen to any one of us if you're not here.
So. But then how would we follow this? Like I said, we couldn't follow it then. We can't follow it now. We haven't been able to follow bylaws for any other.
No, no, we, I mean, we did ultimately follow it then, um, because they were, they were told that there needed to be a specific reason for their denial, not just.
Okay.
Uh, because it's gotta be reported specifically why you're disapproving it. But I don't, I mean, all of this is, uh, delivered directly from state code. Right? There's not, there's really no ad libbing we can do with this.
Correct.
All right, so.
Well, we added it all now. We've been perfectly.
Well, I just asked because that twenty-five percent is new language.
Oh.
So that, that's all been updated because it needs to be argued.
That's a good thing.
So, yeah, uh, yeah, sure, yeah.
And, uh, I think Chris made a point the other day in the meeting that she looked at things, and you correct me if I'm wrong. That we weren't doing our own bylaws and we didn't wanna violate our own bylaws as much as we can, you know. Uh, and just so how easy it is, you've already violated twice. Already can't speak on the same thing twice without the chair approval.
Yeah, but I always, I always ask Mr. Chair.
We haven't passed this yet. I'm telling you, it's pretty easy to violate.
Yeah, and I'm good at those things.
Oh, boy.
A- and you're gonna have follow-up questions. That, can me your follow-up questions another question, a different.
And everybody, according to this, everyone is supposed to give, be given the chance first before the second question is asked. So, Mr. Chair, I will allow everybody else to ask a question before I ask a note.
Most of the, the inputs that, that I've given have, have been incorporated, um, you know. My Robert's rules wanting this, my best, thing I'm most excited about is that we're finally changing old business to unfinished business. All right, so.
And you said, like, all this comes from state codes. That's where the purpose, I was just wondering why it says something like in, uh, one, three, one. Uh, I, A, three, says the members' principal's residence is more than sixty miles from the meeting location identified. Required notice for such meeting. I mean, if that's the case, we're a hundred miles long. If your houses, I mean, they would never have to come to any meeting. Why, where did that come from? Is that from state code?
That is also from state code.
That's kinda strange because what difference does that make? It would seem like you would have to have that as one of the things of where you're actually located. You, let's say, went on vacation, you're three thousand miles away, it'd be where you're physically located, not where your residence is, because your residence never changes.
Well, the, um, the difference has to be between your principal residence and the meeting location. So.
Meeting location's always here, so.
Well, in, in theory, you could have a meeting somewhere.
Somewhere else.
Right. If, if we had a meeting, say a joint meeting in West Point, that, that could be like that's.
It might be.
Nonetheless, trying to illustrate.
How far is it? Hundred miles from West Point to Maga?
Yeah, I think it was like seventy-one miles.
Still, well, that's more than sixty.
And I have a question for council, uh, under five point two, the conduct of the board. Do we have the authority to find bylaws in state? Yes, we do. And now I see that's been moved toward the board, the majority of the board, correct? Is that right, Chris, where I'm reading it?
Yes, that was already in the bylaws. All this, my, this, I mean, I actually must be reviewed and.
But at one point in some of the drafts, it had the chair.
Well, the way that it read was that the chair would determine the discipline, but the majority of the board was required to levy the discipline.
But was that taken out?
That, yeah, she, she'd reworded it to this.
Okay.
Well, the reason I was asking, you know why I asked, because if it was a chair. Right, then what do you do?
Right, so if you look just above where it says, um, those three points.
Mm-hmm.
Um, may be punished by one or more of the following as determined by the chair. And that was the question that you had, is what if it is the chair? Then the chair has to determine their own punishment, but the board still has to vote on it.
Where exactly are we?
Yeah, page fifteen of seventeen.
Yeah. That's another thing. If we can't even conduct any constitutional office, we can't do anything with the treasury or, or the commission of revenue. How can we do it for ourselves? We each have the same amount of power. We shouldn't be able to give disciplinary action on.
No, no one individual of us has the power of the majority of the board.
Right.
I mean, that, that's, that's basically why I was. I mean, it's the chairman, it's not the key.
Yeah.
Right, so you all need to decide what if you want to change that, may, um, maybe punished by, as determined by the chair? Or if you wanna say as determined by the majority of the board?
Majority board is not recommended.
All right, we could probably just strike one or more of the following, as determined by the chair, we can probably just strike as determined by the chair. And just put your colon, that following, and then leave in all disciplinary action will be reviewed and approved by the board.
Why are we even having it at all? What kind of disciplinary are you gonna do? We never did anything for tea party. We didn't realize we could.
Well, fine, well, right. We, we, levying a fine would be a pretty high, high level of, of reprimand. Well, well, right, we levying a fine would be a pretty high, high level of 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 reprimand. You'd be talking some pretty serious.
Well, this is it says by law.
Can we do that?
By law, stephens, so that would be.
Can we do?
That would be, is that your physical pay, or is that what you get for serving?
That is defined as salary.
Salary.
Thought we couldn't do that.
We just we just learned about that you can, yeah.
Then why can't we do it with other constitutional officers?
Because their salary is paid by. Yeah, their salary. And we kind of did that with one when we took. That was above the. So.
Okay. Oh, in the same paragraphs, well, I guess it's a level of citizen's time of year. We changed it to speaking to wishing to address. We talked about this before. It says clearly state their name and district of residence. Not everybody has a district. We talked about this before. Why can't they just say their address? I think we talked about it. So it's not everybody is a resident of this county. We have people come from Maryland, DC. And they wouldn't have a district of residence. Why can't we just put address like we changed it to before? At first, we said with district. And now it's going back to district, but.
It could it could be address. There's no requirement that it be district.
We did change it to three minutes for everything. No group anymore, that kind of stuff. We was getting a little carried away. Yeah.
It was too long. I'm fine with having, I don't think we want to discontinue public comment, but the whole, I was trying to. Struggling to understand the five minutes for a group. Necessary, because so often it was, even if somebody did claim to be representing a group, the purpose of that is I is I always understood it was that they would speak for the group. But what would happen is somebody would come up and say, I got five minutes and speak for a group, and then the rest of the group come up. Anyway, so I think three minutes is fine. Um I'm fine if you want to change the address. I'm not particularly hanging up on that. That's not a problem.
It's just, does it open it up to sensitivity of one's address? Or what's the what's the big deal about having an address versus the district they reside in?
Like I just said, they might not be from any. Yeah, let's just not say anything. That's.
Spend thirty more seconds on that than I care to, so um I if we're if we're worried about them being sensitive about it and we're and we don't.
Why is there at all? Do we have to have that by code?
No, that I I think it's a matter of procedural policy that people supervisors only know where the comments are coming from, if they're coming from within their own district.
Oh, we just say the name. What do you think, Mr.?
Still think district is fine, just because they the group that came in for the grotto comments were all from all over the place. That that was a one off.
But I'm talking about just I didn't even remember that one. I'm thinking about some others, but anyway, yeah, that makes sense. Okay. Well, we have we have many people. We have all the Chinese ladies came and talked. We have one that speaks from Merlin, but she is a property owner and district board. Well, that's fine. Just leave it district, and I don't care. If they're not in a district, they just won't say.
Well, it would be pretty easy for for someone to say participate on Zoom and just grab a district out of the air without a physical address.
When we had cut off on this county, I think, was from the east district, wasn't it? Oh, yeah. What's the east?
East.
Anyway.
Oh, but you one one thing that I can't find it now. I've got everything scrambled up trying to keep up with y'all, but uh. Public comment period, when when the individual phys- physically addresses the board, I think it was. I don't know, one five, I can't find it now.
Section five dash one A.
Yeah, five dash one A. It seems to me we have a leg to stand on now. When we're sitting up here getting beat to death. By an individual. Am I reading that correctly?
You talking about the speaker can rule them out of order?
Nothing, nothing political. Uh no, they're they're not supposed to physically address members of the board.
Right, it's um paragraph three under five dash one A. All comments are addressed to the chair. Speakers may address only those matters within the scope of the board's authority. Um that are not on the agenda for a public hearing for that meeting. No speaker is to engage in political statements, personal attacks upon members of the board, supervisors, county employees, or officials, or any other person. Nor are speakers entitled to use abusive language or discuss matters outside the purview of the board.
So I assume that that would be at the discretion of the chair. So, Mr. Chair.
The chair has.
You can you can save us some pretty good beatings if you if you.
There there's a. I moderated some fun kind of public comment periods before, and and it's a fine line between personal attack and a and a criticism of your performance of your public duty. But, you know, you it's one of those lines. It's it's like that Supreme Court thing. I I don't know. I can't define it, but I know it when I see it. Right? And I and I've ruled people out of order before for for crossing that line from a criticism of of the job you're performing into, you know, a personal attack.
Well, you've heard some of this stuff recently, and I think some of these things do cross. But who am I to judge? This is a guy.
Right.
If you.
We've we've nominated and elected him duly, so we trust his his judgment on these matters.
Well, I've had him stomp out of here before.
Right. It it's difficult to let to legislate, because you run into all kinds of First Amendment things, and it's it's difficult to judge too, but it's um. Yeah, it's a tough one, but there's probably not much more we got than what we've currently got in here.
Anything else? A general question. I said the black stuff is stricken, the red stuff and the purple stuff.
The cross through.
Is gone.
Black is strict.
Right. What's the difference between the red highlights and the purple highlights?
The the purple highlights have come from the attorney.
Ah.
Now we know.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. That's got real.
Somewhere.
And there's a purple came from Chris. Okay, that sounds good. Okay. Yep, got it. Yeah, it's okay.
And and Mr. Chair, if I may, one more thing, and I promise I won't say anything else. The the uh the way that we are approaching the future agendas, I'm fine with that, as long as we strictly enforce.
The deadline.
My my problem all along has been getting the stuff late or either coming here and and having it laying on our desk without the opportunity to to look at it. So if we lock it in.
Um I do have one question actually for you um that. It's section three point seven, form of petitions. Every petition communication or address to the board shall be in respect. Respectful language and accepting cases where it's otherwise allowed shall be in writing. Um, does that mean that that the board would like every item on this agenda to have something in writing to go along with it? And. If someone had asked to be on the agenda and does not provide at the very least a memo of the subject to which they want to discuss. Um, I can push them to the next agenda.
That's what.
That's that's what I'd like to say. Cause I mean, I'm just speaking for myself, right?
In case in point, like today, you just had this thing on here, not to pick on ADA, but they gave it to us at the last minute. I thought they should have been pushed to the next one, but.
Right.
That hadn't been passed yet. That's why I was thinking that that's where you were going.
And I will do that in the future if that is what the board wishes.
With that in mind, you do know that he he can bring it to a a board member and a board member that can make a motion. And if it gets a second, then we'd have to at least vote on it.
Right.
Anything else?
Man, so it's scrambled up now.
Um section three dash sixteen confidential and privileged information, the area highlighted in green. Do you want to leave that in? This is something we've not been doing. Do you want to leave that in or take that out?
What page number is that?
Um it's page twelve. Section three dash sixteen. The um highlighted in green.
I'll take your word for it. How about that, counselor?
Uh if my guess is that that is in there in the event that attorney client privilege communication is disclosed inadvertently. You could attempt to reclaim that privilege, thereby allowing for its use in a proceeding to remain intact or it's non use in a proceeding to remain intact. Often, once that privilege is broken, it's over. Then that information is out there. It's discoverable. If you you can use it in a in a proceeding. You could say, well, that was inadvertent. We're reclaiming the privilege, and that would give our office the ability to still try to withhold that as protected information.
So I think you said it was leaving. I I would recommend this, even.
Um I have one other question as well. This one, um I was about boards and commissions where it said that we had to give thirty day notice to the public. Um of any meeting where. Uh an appointment was going to be made to a board of commission.
Right, so that's section five three on page sixteen. I I had understood the recommendation that we would delete it as it was presented, as I'm I'm fine deleting it.
Okay.
It's not required by law.
Um but we're no requirement for notice of an appointment.
Think incentive to strike. You have anything? Any board member?
No, I submitted a few comments. They've been incorporated. I'm pleased with what we have.
And we're down to the last thing, I think, unless somebody's got anything. The board of supervisors request.
We got to adopt by law.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
I'll move if we adopt the bylaws as presented with noted changes made tonight.
Second.
Open.
Mr. Carver.
Hi.
Mr. Morin.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodge.
Hi.
Now. All right. And uh I think you started you last time, but you again, right?
Um last real, you know, we got broadband update in November, which will mean we're at the three month mark in February. Let's talk about the possibility of maybe having another updates.
Yes, sir.
Uh for this this session next month.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Greenwood. I was just wondering, I know uh we had mentioned stuff last year about the library, but it sounds like there's nothing that can be done because it's certain two years worth of. Request for getting rid of them, so we're gonna have to. I still would like to know, they said they up this budget this year again, and they've told us what it is, so. Maybe a little more transparency on that. I know we've got some stuff with West Point, maybe look into. I mean, since we can't do anything with them, let's try to maybe do some of the better our library, well, not our library, they're all our libraries are picking on West Point, and they're all King William, they've got to get together. Right, I don't know. I didn't mean it, but anyway, can we do something maybe to upgrade the one at this end of the county? That shopping center is just nasty.
We can discuss.
We have a lot, and we've talked about, if we can save this a closed session, but the things we have mentioned. Right, we could discuss that with the director, I think. A huge step forward would be to uh upgrade the facilities of at both locations. And obviously, uh there's a plan for West Point, and there could be a plan for. Uh. Whatever this calls. Yeah, if you uh if you go forward with the plan to uh acquire property and. And uh and build one. The only other thing I had was that, as Mr. Carver suggested, just what mentioned last time, we have thirty one new positions. As of last year, we had seven more here, plus the one for the EDA. I mean, like I said, I got on the board to try and save people taxpayers taxes, and we just seem to keep spending, spending, spending. I mean. I don't know. It just seems like we need to try to curb some of the spending, but I mean, that's something to talk about in budget, I guess. Thanks.
Uh. Mr. Ashcraft, I think I've mentioned to you that uh the landing on uh. I guess it's Landing Road, the Avenue's Mail Road. I had a phone call, a good conversation with a with a fellow. I can't remember his last name. I know him well. He's he's quiet. He is a retiree with DEQ. And uh he had physically spoken to you and Steve in the past. I'd like to maybe. Revisit that and see if we can do something with that property.
Sure.
Uh I think he has a lot of a lot of knowledge also. Uh, thank everybody for for voting for me. I'm shocked. And that's pretty much it.
All right, and Mr. Morin, we want to, as a board, thank you for an excellent year's chair. And that's the reason I left you to speak next to last.
I've got three things, Mr. Chairman. Uh first of all, the allegations that were presented to us in public comment period last meeting, we had uh. Allegations that we had committed uh crime or. Uh about sending a letter to the judge outlining our concerns for the interim treasurer to be. And we had clarified that we broke no laws, no codes, no nothing. We did what we thought was right, so I want to set the record straight on that regard. Uh. Second of all was best wishes to Ms. Branch on her trip. I think this is her first overseas. It's gonna be interesting. Tell us all about it. Plenty of pictures. And lastly, uh like to recognize National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day to Sheriff and the captain back there. Thank you for all you do. And that's it.
Mr. We. Mr. Hodges, I know that uh Mr. Chair, I I just 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 one more, just one more small thing. And I appreciate Mr. Moore mentioning the 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 letter, the well, anyway, I'd also uh remind people that. It was another elective board also that signed that letter, other than the board of supervisors, and everybody seems to be forgetting that. I'd just like to remind them. Thank you.
It was both boards uh that signed it in, and I'm I'm gonna give you. My part, since you spoke twice, and get everybody out of here.
Censor censor me.
That's right. But thank you, everybody, for coming, and we'll see you January twenty third. Do I have a message?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Morin.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Carver.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi, meeting adjourned.